And can we please have a roll call?
I'm going to do the roll call tonight.
Okay.
Commissioner Lasky.
Here.
Commissioner Slaymaker.
Here.
Commissioner Burke.
Here.
Commissioner Seidel. Commissioner Hart.
Here.
And Chair Karapiet.
Here.
Also attending is Attorney Anne Danforth, Sammy Malakaman, Associate Planner, and I'm Nancy Miller, Technician, and on Zoom our Director of Planning and Building Rebecca Markwith.
Okay. Agenda Item B, Open Forum. This is an opportunity for any citizen to briefly address the Planning Commission on any matter that does not appear on this agenda. Upon being recognized by the Chair, please state your name and limit your oral statement to no more than three minutes. Matters that appear to warrant a more lengthy presentation or Commission consideration will be agendized for further discussion at a later meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak at the open forum? Seeing none. Any on Zoom, Nancy? Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item C, Reports. The Agenda Item consists of any oral reports from Standing Planning Commission Committee's and an individual member of the Commission, Planning Commission, and staff. Is there anyone on the Commission that has a report? Is there any staff reports? I do have a couple of things to discuss. After speaking with Mayor Lynch, we're going to create a task force to review some of our floodplain guidelines. And so I am going to be on the committee and Ashley Johnson is going to join me on the committee, Vice Chair, and we will be meeting with Brian Van Sun to go over that and I assume a staff will be present. In my conversation with Mayor Lynch, we're also creating a task force that will be a joint task force to discuss our tree ordinance in the sense of that we're going to come up with what our goal is, that we're trying to achieve with the tree ordinance. And I believe Marsha Lasky has asked to serve on that committee. And I will serve on it and Mayor Jim Lynch is also going to be on that committee. And then the third thing I have, I would like to put on our agenda for next month to change our December meeting to the second Tuesday versus the third Tuesday since it's so close to the holiday. Okay.
Great, thank you. So let me, can I just confirm the date? That would be December 12th, I believe? Is that the date that you're asking to change it to?
I didn't look at the exact date, but hold on, I'll get my can. Yeah, the 12th.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, moving on to Item D, Consent Calendar. The Consent Calendar consists of items that the Planning Commission considers to be non-controversial unless any item is specifically removed by any member of the Planning Commission, staff, or ordinance, the Consent Calendar will be adopted in one motion. Items removed will be considered in the sequence as they appear below. If any member of the audience wishes to have an item removed, please raise your hand and we will recognize you to remove it. If you are in the Zoom meeting platform, please go to the bottom of your screen and use the raised hand symbol. After removing the item, the Planning Commission will call for comment at the appropriate time. Is there anyone on the Commission that wishes to remove anything on the Consent Calendar? Anyone in the audience that wishes to remove anything on the Consent Calendar? Seeing none. Is there anyone on Zoom, Nancy? May I have a motion for Items Number One and Two, please?
I move to accept the Consent Calendar. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any dissents? Passes unanimously. Okay, we move on to Public Hearings. Item Number Three, 105 Golden Gate. May we please have a staff report?
Yes. Thank you Chair Karapiet and members of the Planning Commission for your consideration this evening as an application for design review and revocable license for residential addition and associated improvements at 105 Golden Gate Avenue. Late mail was submitted to staff after your packets were published and are on the dais for you. The project changes from the August Planning Commission meeting include a reduction in total floor area from the previously proposed 1,177 square feet to a total 509 square feet. The upper level would have no change. The lower level would be reduced from 290 square feet to 132 square feet. And the previously proposed 510 square foot office area would be removed and developed as a junior ADU under a separate ministerial permit. The new landscaping plan includes 30 potocarpus to eight feet tall along the lower retaining wall and four coastal live oak trees. The bay and cherry laurels facing two eucalyptus road would be included with this project as would all the additional landscaping proposed at last month's meeting. The project would remove the infinity edge of the new pool and remove the previously proposed eight foot tall privacy fence at the rear yard. The garage would now receive Alaskan cedar siding. And a new green wall guardrail is proposed at the lawn level adjacent to the outdoor dining area. The applicant included a 2015 survey depicting the original grade of the parcel prior to the unpermitted work. This elevation includes the original grade detailed in that survey and is outlined in purple. The modified or current grade is shown in blue. The project would require a revocable license to install a stormwater dissipator on public land adjacent to Belvedere Avenue. Staff has received letters from owners Roy Wickland at 15 Belvedere Avenue and met with owner Deborah Wilton at Two Eucalyptus Road and owners Tony Dunahoe and Jao Track at 19 Belvedere Avenue. Comments received included adding a five foot tall privacy fence at the new lower retaining wall, adding a four foot tall privacy fence on the retaining wall at the lawn area to preserve the acacia trees, to have accurate renderings of the rear yard landscaping, to ensure that the proposed landscaping would be maintained at their specified heights and to ensure that an appropriate construction management would be put in place. Staff has received revised plans from the project architect addressing neighbor concerns. The architect has prepared a presentation tonight and will go over those changes. The project would be categorically exempt from CEQA. And as outlined in the staff report, staff believes the facts support the required design review findings and recommend the Planning Commission adopt the resolution granting design review at 105 Golden Gate Avenue. Thank you.
Do any commissioners have questions for staff at this time? Yes, Kevin.
Hi Sammy, thank you for that report. It's great. A couple of questions though. There were some specific issues. Nancy, I'm getting closer to the mic. There were some specific issues raised in the last design review meeting. Two of the major issues were hill stability and privacy for the downhill neighbors on Belvedere Avenue. Does staff or in staff's opinion, has the applicant sufficiently addressed or addressed in a meaningful way these two major issues?
Regarding the privacy, in my, it would be my opinion, the staff's opinion, it would be yes. And then the hillside stability, the construction management plan that the applicant would provide and just building a new foundation and lawn would definitely be an improvement from what's currently there. But to answer your question, yes, staff believes that they satisfied that.
Thank you.
And if, sorry, can I just interrupt for one second or add to Sammy's great answers? The, in terms of slope stability, that is certainly reviewed at the time of design review, but where we really scrutinize it and review it in more detail is at the time of building permit when we've received engineered plans and soils reports and things of that nature where that are sort of more appropriate at the time of building permit.
Thank you for that clarification.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Can we hear from the applicant?
If that computer isn't working, I could probably share it from my screen here at home.
Yep, please. Kevin's going to take a look.
You want me to share that presentation?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is your microphone on Sean? Green light?
Okay, it's on now. Thank you.
Is this the presentation you want Sean?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Let me make it bigger.
I don't know, you might need to download it Rebecca to run it, but.
It should work like this. Can you see it?
Yeah, that should be fine. Okay, all right. I just want to say thanks to Sammy and Rebecca for all their help. This one's been a lot of work. Thanks to the Commission for hearing our project again tonight. If you could go to next slide, please.
It's not letting me. I'm just downloading it right now.
Nancy, why don't you reset the timer? Okay, good.
Still have my laptop. Once she downloads it.
Can you see it now? Are you still looking at the other one?
Still looking at the.
We're still looking at the other one.
Let me stop share.
But the problem is it's not open.
Oh. I think you just took the share away from me.
You did. Hold on one second.
Yeah.
Okay Rebecca, can you try one more time?
That work, can you see that? Is that? No, it's not there.
There you go. Okay.
No, I think this is.
That's Roy.
From Roy.
Okay.
Try this again. Where did I make down? I got it. I got it. Is it Sean?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, yeah. Just walk me through it.
Just throw it, we drew it up. All right. Yeah, thanks again to the Commission for hearing us tonight. So I'm just going to start with the key takeaways from last month's hearing. Privacy was obviously the biggest thing that we were trying to work with the neighbors on. People using the pool, the patio, so audio and visual privacy was a huge issue. And then it was just brought up, but slope stabilization was a very important issue. And then the concept of restoration was really important. I think the lens of restoring what was illegally done in our approach to this project was clear. That was very important. Next slide, please. Sammy did a good job covering these, but just to reiterate, we basically completely redid our whole planting plan adjacent to Belvedere Avenue and screening. And there are 40 potocarpus trees proposed and four new live oak above Belvedere Avenue that our landscape architect John is going to get into the detail on. We did remove the infinity edge of the pool. We're no longer asking for the FAR exception. And in looking at the slope stabilization, we do have a soils report by Miller Pacific that has borings right where the lawn is. So that was really helpful to understand a little bit more about how much fill was imported in the legal work. And then we spent a lot of time doing modified versus original grade studies. So the sections have both of those datums per the Commission's request. Next slide, please. This is, quickly I want to touch on this. This is in the lines of the restoring the site. These were all the items that were illegally done that were noted in the resale report. And I'm not going to go through it one by one, but I'll just say that proposed work for this would remedy every single one of them. And that's the applicants from the get-go. That was the goal. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to John Merton to discuss the screening.
I think the comment was if the image could be more full screen, I'm not sure if it could be brought up one more click perhaps. Yeah, my name's John Merton. I'm with Studio Green Landscape Architects. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, this is John Merton, Studio Green Landscape Architects. And I've been helping on this project. And obviously, a lot of more specific comments have been made for the last hearing. And so we put some effort into addressing them in a serious way. I've also met with the neighbors, the downhill neighbors, and my focus is a discussion about the impact of Belvedere Avenue and the proposal that we have for addressing those neighbors in particular. There are existing trees along Belvedere Avenue and we intend to keep them, the acacia trees and the existing oak trees, and augment that group of trees. Essentially, that's what we're doing. And so then it's how do we get the optimal screening? The previous submittal had 30 trees because it was a replacement of the Grecian laurels to the potocarpus. And the potocarpus was, came out of a discussion with the neighbors because of a concern for disease resistance and just the speed in which they grow and also the height of availability because we can get that particular plant seven to nine feet in height. So we would have a lot more immediacy with that planting and also with the ability to plant that shrub very close to the existing wall to maximize the benefit of the height. We can move on to the next slide. So, you know, just context, yeah, I think you under, everyone knows the context. I don't think I have to explain it, but the half-tone plants are the existing trees and the new proposed ones, the darker ones. Those are the, we've highlighted the ones that are of primary importance. And that's the hedge row, shrub row, potocarpus at the base of the wall. And the inclusion of four replacement coastal live oaks, and those are 36 inch box, natural form. And then the large shrubs to the east, which are still the laureus nobilis saratoga. We can go to the next slide. So just for context, the neighbor's property has a similar condition where there's a pool and they have access to the street and various plantings. And of course, the house is a little more visible. Next slide. So this is, I think we missed one, but anyway, this, or if we can go back one more, I think something jumped over. Yeah. And this is the other house to the west. And you can see that it has a pretty exposed condition. So those are not examples that we would want to repeat. And the next sample, the next slide is a house that I did the landscape for some years ago. And just to show how the shrub planting can be effective in providing screening, this is, of course, we would have the trees in front of it, but it's similar in concept. Next slide. So here are the views. I have a series of views from Belvedere looking up and then how we plan to address these particular views. It's the next slide, please. So here we have the potocarpus planting along with one additional, one of the new proposed oak trees. Next slide. And then if you were to render that, this is the impact of that planting. On the next slide. So here are two locations where you can see through the existing vegetation on the slope, a little bit more to the west of center of the house. And again, now we can go to the next slide and where we would be putting the potocarpus hedge row and then that, you know, we would be screening where the primary views are. These photographs are taken from the opposite side of the, of the street. So it would have just to show that it's, it would be less visible from the center of the street, for example. Next slide. And again, with the just the vegetation, the screening behind. Next slide. And the proposed screening behind. And the next slide, this is another one of the kind of holes. And here we have, again, the potocarpus and we have one of the proposed oak trees. And we can get to the next slide and then render it in. We would expect to see that kind of density. And the next slide. Again, we have some peekaboo on the right. And there, again, we have, the next slide, please. That's with one oak and then again, the potocarpus. And uphill of that is where we have the laureus nobilis, Grecian laurels, some people call them bay laurels, proposed. And next slide. So this is plants that we had located. It was the, in the first round, we had proposed the hedge row below the wall, all in this particular plant. But we've changed that to the potocarpus. The, but we still would be using that facing the west direction in a standard form. So it would be substantially tall and very full. And that's the same plant that was used in eight eucalyptus. Next slide, please. So here's an example of a coastal live oak in a natural form. So we would expect to see multi-branch. And because we have the potocarpus directly behind it, it doesn't have to be dense to the bottom of the plant, but we want to be able to start to shape those and form those as the infill behind the acacia and then maintain the acacia with good reputable arborist. Next slide, please. This is the potocarpus that we've located. They're in Santa Rosa. And so these are seven to nine feet in height and quite dense. This is, there's 35 of them in this particular block and we're proposing 40. So we could in fact, secure these because we've located them. I think that's the last slide. And I, oh, I think we also, yeah, we talked about the, the green screen, the concept here is that we would be growing vines from the planter that we have, the bio-treatment planter up to the vine, to the railing in order to, again, add another layer and greening against that element. Are we going to, are you going to talk about the stabilization at all? Okay, I think that's, that's it for, for my content.
We just have a couple more slides. The slope stabilization. I'm going to have Mark, our contractor, speak to the soils report and some of the constructability things.
Thank you Sean. Thank you commissioners, neighbors, members of the public and staff for, for all of your work and attention on this. My name's Mark Swanson and I'm the contractor on this project and I've been working on it with Sean and John and the Costas for many months now. And really, I just want to talk about sort of the meat and potatoes things, specifically slope stabilization. I know how important that is. And we included just a few pages from the soils report.
Let him finish, please.
Thank you. A few pages from the soils report that I thought were very relevant and important. And you know, everybody sort of has different things they love to look at. And I personally like soils reports and good soil conditions. And I was surprised and enthusiastic about the fact that the two borings that we, I focused on because they're specific to the pole are borings three and four. And I don't know if you can zoom in on this or not, right there where your mouse was. But both of those borings, B3 and B4, they come with a boring log, which is, if we go to the next slide, so you see B3 upper left corner there. And you know, not to get too into the details, but basically how this works is they forward an auger into the ground. And this was a four inch diameter auger. And then they pull it out and they look at what the existing conditions are. And if you see the first, if you go to the left a little bit, if possible, Rebecca, on that slide, you'll see a scale. It's in meters and feet. So right where Rebecca's mouse is, that's feet one, then it goes down to two and then three. And if you go to the right, the word bedrock appears right above that or below franziskin melange. And bedrock is what we're all looking for. That's what soils engineers want, contractors want, structural engineers want, because when you hit bedrock, then you're into competent soil and it's bearing soil. And that's sort of where we begin our piers. Typically, we see piers that are eight to 10 feet deep, sometimes deeper depending on the conditions. But in this case, I'm anticipating about a 10-foot deep pier. But what this really shows us is that we're hitting bedrock only two and a half feet down. We first go through about a foot or so of sand, which is the fill, and then some more clay sand, which is a probably mixture of the fill and the existing material that was the original grade and then the bedrock. It's not uncommon in this area for us to have to drill through many, many feet, 10, 15 feet before we get the competent soil. So it was really great to see that we have shallow bedrock here. The next boring number four on the, which is on the right side. So just go to the next slide, if you will, Rebecca. Thank you. So just go to the next slide, if you will, Rebecca, thank you. You can see we, we, again, I consider this shallow. You have about a foot of fill that would have been put down, and then we get into the sand, the moist, loose, fine material. And then at five feet deep, we're into bedrock again. So this is sort of dreamy stuff from a drilling foundation perspective. It's, we consider this very shallow bedrock. And it also tells a story of how much fill was there. And that, that's how we were able to extrapolate sort of cubic yards of fill and, and kind of with the balance numbers equal. So I, I feel very comfortable and confident in saying that the, the foundation here will, will be bearing on very shallow bedrock. And it'll be a robust foundation and a marked improvement than what we have there, which is essentially three to five feet of just fill held up by a weathered wall. The next thing I want to talk about, because I, I do truly know how important it is for the neighborhood and the neighbors and the public, is our construction management plan. And I can tell you that the building official and the public works team do not take that lightly. And typically, we have to spend a lot of time in the conference room working out a construction management plan that's going to suffice and satisfy all the requirements. So I can just, I just wanted to reinforce the fact that Brian, the building official and his team will certainly make sure that the construction manag- plan, management plan is safe and efficient. And as far as work down on Belvedere Avenue, which none of us really want to have any sort of quantity of, I did make a list just for transparency and expectations of what you can expect down on Belvedere Avenue. Very limited work, but we will have to do the drainage work when it comes down and terminates. I'd bring in the, the bigger trees from Belvedere Avenue because I just don't think it, it's safe to sling them over the house. We set, set up a temporary fence, which we always do, and a silt fence. And generally speaking, that's, that's all the work that we would do down there. And we would do it with gear hard and a proper encroachment permit. And we would do our best to work with the neighbors and anybody else in the area to make sure it goes smoothly. Because, you know, we, that's what we want to do, is a smooth process for everyone involved. And that's all I have right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone have questions for the applicant? Okay, yeah, yeah, anybody on the team?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Hi, John. I had a question on L5. Is, it does, it's not really labeled. The green screen, is that the drawing up on the right-hand side on L5? It's not labeled.
So the, so there's a, it's a steel and cable on the, in the, both ends. And then there's a more dense section in the center area.
Okay, so that, that is it, I guess. And what's the, what's the planting that you're going to do on that?
We want to do evergreen planting. I haven't, I haven't actually decided exactly what it is. I, it would be something like star jasmine.
Okay, a vine, you're gonna put?
It would be a vine, an evergreen vine.
All right, thank you. And I just, I had one more question, probably for Sean. The pool is a little bit wider now. It's, I think it's 11 and a half feet versus 10. So is there more, was, is there more cut and cut for that because the pool's wider than it was before?
Good question. Because we got rid of the infinity edge and the, the second trough, that's why it got bigger. But I don't, I think the foundation of the pool would have been as deep either way. So I don't think it affected the, the cut fill at all, but that's the reason for the difference.
So you're just taking up the room that the trough had?
Exactly, you're basically adding the trough back to the, the main part of the pool.
Okay. And one question, the pool is what, four to six?
Yes, there is, so the drawings that get, got sent over today as late mail included a bunch of, there were comments from commissioners in the last few days that we picked up, but on the landscape plan, it's noted as four to six now.
And, sorry, I have one more comment. Are you finished? And I know we had, we had, I had talked about this with Mark, but on the drawing 2.0, it shows those two oak trees that we're, we're trying to keep. And then on one of the other pages, it says to take them out. So that's still inconsistent.
So that oak tree, we all looked at it. And I think the unfortunate reality is it's going to be hard to keep it. We would love to do it, but there's a lot of foundation work. And the elevation change of the proposed patio compared to what it is now, it's lower. So we're gonna try to keep it, but we didn't feel like we could stand up here and tell you that we can for sure keep it. But I wish we could, and we'll try, so.
I do, too, all right.
I have a quick question for Mark. So when you're talking about the drainage work and the large trees, when would you be doing that part, the trees, the large trees? What, what part of the?
Yeah, so we would first want to stabilize the slope, and then we would want to bring in the trees. And it's, it's kind of a balancing act because we want to plant as soon as we can. So we create growth and, and the neighborhood can recognize the improvements. But we don't want to plant trees and then be doing a bunch of excavation and disturbing the root system. So I, I think the first thing we want to do on this is attack that wall and, and get the excavation in that area done. And then the trees are on the way, in my opinion, yeah.
Sorry, I, I'm sorry, I have one more question for John. John, I think we, we actually need a count of the, the existing trees, like the acacia trees. How many are going to remain? It's kind of vague at this point. So I think we just need to determine, give them a count so we know exactly what trees that will remain.
Yeah, sure, we could do that. There is a very, I guess I would say, distinct line that the existing trees occupy as the slope comes up. And the work is somewhat back from that. So the intention is to keep all of those trees. I mean, we can, we can certainly give a count. So maybe at the end, we can count and make sure, you know, we saw the same number of trees.
Yeah, that'd be great, okay, thank you.
I thought from our last meeting, those are all on the survey report. Is that correct?
The survey, I mean, I think, I, I'd have to double check. I didn't, but, you know, maybe, maybe over four inches or something. There, there's probably some very small ones in there, too.
Okay.
I can't confirm they were on the survey and surveyed, but he might be right. If they're under four inches, the surveyor may have not had them. But any substance of acacia would be documented.
Got it. Do you have more, Marshall? One other question for you, John, is, thank you for providing the additional detail in terms of the screening goals. So how long would you say would it take from planting to a date when you would achieve that end result? I mean, so that, that's, you know, I guess the desired end state, but how long is it from the putting it in the ground to getting there?
Yeah, there is one section in the, in the presentation, on the, the main, not the, added part of the presentation that shows, but, you know, it's all relative, I guess. I tried to take those pictures from standing on the other side of the street, looking up. So at seven feet, eight feet, we're getting screening immediately. So I would, we're getting, we're not getting to the very top. I guess if you stood right at the edge of the railing, your, your head would be visible. But I would think within two years, we should be able to have covered that view.
And then the, the height in your mind is what?
The height for optimal screening, about nine feet, nine to 10?
Nine to 10, thank you.
So I have a question, since you're in the hot seat. So why on the plans does it say eight feet?
Well, the, the, so we spent a little time looking for plant materials to see what we can find in the marketplace. And those were the largest ones we could find as a block.
Oh, so you're saying you're planting eight foot?
Correct.
So what is the ultimate height you see those podicarpus at?
I, I'd say around 12.
So visually, would it go up and include the current railing that's there?
Correct. I mean, it, it potentially can grow and be maintained at the railing height.
And how do we ma- make sure that it's maintained at that height?
Well, you could make a condition, I suppose, that the, the podicarpus are maintained at the, at the railing height. It, it, they won't stop growing, they want to get taller.
Well, no, I understand that, but, okay. Well, since I'm talking, let's see. So this addresses something that the Costas did not do, but they are responsible for, is that when we got the survey from the prior owner, Tozzi, it showed that when they created that modified grade, as we call it, they removed four kind of substantial, I believe, pine trees, or at least three big pine trees and maybe something else. So part of our code says that if you receive permission to remove a tree, you have to replace the tree. And actually, the code says two trees. But, so in the oak trees that you're putting in are for other trees that have come out. So how are we going to address those four trees that were removed during the unpermitted work?
There may have been more conversation than, about this than, than I was part of. But my understanding, or my, yeah, my understanding is that we're putting four trees in a 36-inch box, oaks in, in lieu of those four removed trees. I'm not aware, I mean, I, yeah, so I'm not exactly aware of, but other trees might be added in. I personally think that there's not a lot of room for more. I, I think it would be, it's already quite full, in fact.
So let me ask you one other question. So on, on the lawn area, the patio, the dining area, and that, you know, that whole section that's being replaced, is there any, because there's no, like hardly any vegetation up there. Is there any way to add any kind of trees on that level?
Well, we didn't consider it, other than the potential to preserve the one tree. And we've looked at that. And, but in addition to that, let's say over to the west, there is a very large oak tree that currently overhangs on that side. So, and there is one on, I mean, on the east side. And there is one on the west side. So there, there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of opportunity for a new tree in that area. But we hadn't discussed that specifically.
Okay, all right. Oh, and I just wanted to bring up one thing. I, I want to disclose that I did meet with the applicant and the whole team. And along with Vice Chair Ashley Johnson, to look at some of the preliminary changes to make sure they were going in the right direction. And during that presentation, I believe you made mention of that ultimately, you know, you would want to replace the acacia. Is that still the case, or has the mindset been changed?
I would say that the mindset has been changed. It is my personal bias, is that if it was my house, I would, I would want to, over time, change the acacia. But there's no urgency with the, this client to change them out.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we don't have a phased project here. We get all done, and then all of a sudden, we get an application to rip out all the acacia.
Now, the conversations I have had has been to start working with a couple arborists that I know that do, you know, high-quality work and that they would be engaged. You know, it was Randy Harris and Chip Karns. I mean, that's who I was putting forward to work with them in the future to start, you know, developing a more dense and full edge. I mean, and in my opinion, if that means the acacias get transferred out over time, I think that would be a plus. But it's not, there's no plan to do that at this time.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions, Nana?
Love to know. This whole bottom hillside, as we all know, is very, very unstable. And talking about keeping all the acacias and so on. But you are going in not only to plant the 40 podicarpus, which will be a lot of excavation and so on, and so on. But my interest is mostly on the big oak trees that you're bringing in, the 36-inch. How do you visualize holding up the hill behind them? It's more of visual aesthetic thing? Are you gonna have a wooden wall behind them? Are you gonna lay stone? What, what are you seeing?
It's a good point. We had talked about introducing a very low wooden edger on the front and possibly the back to help with that condition. The steepest, they, they wouldn't be planted on the steepest part of the slope. But as it, it comes up and it, it, it changes direction and it's a little less steep where they would be planted. And additionally, the podicarpus, we've also thought that we could add like a low border on the front of it just again to help. Yeah, like, like a 10-inch kind of landscape edger, just so we can plant on top of that on a flat surface. So, yeah, I guess it's possible that we would introduce a, like a low wooden edger, you know, to help those, those trees get established without eroding away.
Oh, another thing. Up on the road, on Golden Gate, you have, I don't know what plants there are, but behind the present hedge, just before eucalyptus starts, you have two, I think it is maple trees that are designated to stay or remain and be protected. And they, in the drawings, there are some fairly large protective fencing. And I'm just wondering if Mr. Swanson here is gonna use that whole area as a staging, building all that. How in the world are you gonna protect these?
So this would be the east, the northeast corner?
North, south.
Oh, south.
Just where eucalyptus starts. That's where he wants to have his funnel done to have all the work going through. In that corner, there, one in the corner and one a little further towards the gate.
Maybe, maybe I'll have Mark.
Is it possible to bring the landscape plan back up on the screen?
Yes, hold on.
M0.03.
Rebecca, I did find it here on this computer, if you want me to share here.
Is it working?
The PDF I am able to pull up, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'll stop.
It's these two ace here. So there, yeah, there's two oaks there. There is, there is there. So if you could, what are our plan?
Sorry, Nancy. So what our plan would be is to set up the chain link tree protection around these trees that are to remain here and here and here. And then we would build up a ramp that would take us right here to this area, which is where we have the ability to park. It's outside of the fire truck lane. Alternatively, if that wasn't going to work, then we would also bring up material from the lower portion. I don't know how to, let's see if this works. There we go. From the driveway area. Yeah, for for any material that, if we import anything, we'll bring it in and we could easily drop it down to this lower area. And we don't anticipate very much off-haul or removal of material. But if we are going to remove anything, we can do it through the ramp on this side, coming up here in between the trees that are to be preserved. And also use this as a secondary means of ingress and egress for materials as well.
Okay, because on the south southwest corner, you have another one that's to protect a it just says existing tree to remain. And also on the west northwest side on this page, L O point zero three, you have also another very long protective fence protecting quercus and trees to, yeah, to be protected. And it just seems that all this planting and hauling, I'm just wondering how you can say that they are going to be protected like this.
Well, it it's it's a totally reasonable concern. I can understand that. And what I can tell you is we we have projects in Belvidere currently that we're protecting trees that are really tight access on sides of hills and their the trees are doing very well. You know, we 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 take that seriously and we'll have oversight of landscape architect and arborist for any tree protection.
I had a few questions. Actually, I think my landscape questions have been answered already. I do have a question for Sean. And louder.
Yeah, into the mic.
Into the mic. I spent some time, and I I will say I visited the homeowners and was at the site. And I spent some time studying the the driveway to the new garage, the residential entry. It's a pretty complex area because Belvedere Avenue is rising at a pretty good clip there. And I guess I wanted to ask you, you know, kind of how you visualize the cars accessing the garage? And what kind of caught my attention, I don't know if we can bring it up, but on a four point two, section F, is a section that kind of illustrates the garage with a flat driveway ramp coming out towards Belvedere Avenue. But at one side of the south side, there's probably about a three and a half foot rise. So it made me think this is not exactly a conventional garage that you back straight out of. I wonder if you could just talk to me a little bit about what your vision is, how that area works.
Sure. Yeah, I think you're right. The Golden Golden Gate Avenue, the slope existing where we have to connect to rises up pretty quickly along it. And that set the the floor elevation of the garage. So if that section showed flat, that's it shouldn't have showed flat. It obviously has to ramp up, make up a couple feet. But I think we're trying to make it a much more safe ingress and egress so you can pull. I don't know if the costas would back in or what, but it's a vast improvement to what they they have now. Where they would have visibility before they have to pull out on a Golden Gate Avenue. But yeah, we did study the the grading of that driveway quite a bit.
Well, I I feel like this is an important point. I mean, this is where the house connects, you know, back into the city. And there's obviously cars on the street, but there's also pedestrians on the street because we don't have sidewalks in that location. By my calculation, the if the car on the south side of the garage was trying to back out, it would be like a twenty-seven percent grade, which is very hard to maneuver. And, you know, another concern I have in that area is that there's a tall new wall proposed with a gate that's directly adjacent to where you'd be pulling out. So if you were to pull out in normal fashion towards Belvedere, you really wouldn't have visibility of what's on the street until you got your car out into the street. Part of the reason I'm sensitive to this is because it's coming up on a lot of projects we design now and cities are enforcing these vision triangles. And so I just want to flag this as an area of concern because once the project is underway and floor levels and everything are established, there's not really a way to rectify it if it's an issue. And so personally, I would feel more comfortable if there was a detailed study of that area that, you know, showed its functionality and workability for the owners of the property. So I wanted to just express that.
Okay, all right. That that makes sense. We we can absolutely do that.
And then I I can, I remembered a couple more questions. So I asked you in our meeting to be very specific and and close to what your cut and fill was going to be regarding the pool and or the pool area, I'll call it, it's gonna a whole area. And in the garage and the other additions. And you have said that it's only going to be a hundred and fifty cubic yards of fill. And Mark added that probably some other debris would have to go offsite during the construction. So I just want to make sure that that's a pretty good estimate of what kind, how many trucks can be expected in that part portion of the project.
Sure.
Yeah, Sean and I spent a bunch of time on this and and I've kind of even tried to play devil's advocate and push back with the sort of the what-if scenarios. But we do keep coming back to the hundred and fifty cubic yards. And I said, well, if we have to scrape another foot here or there, then maybe we have, you know, another two twenty truck or twenty cubic yards, two truckloads. But you you know, and because I'm taking seriously Commissioner about trying to be as transparent as you can. So I'm I'm factoring like the kind of the what ifs in too. So I think Sean's number of one fifty is correct. And I think it can go either way. If, you know, we have good compaction results, it'll be less. But if 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 we have expansion, it could be a little bit more. But I think one fifty is a very fair number and I feel good about it.
Okay, and just in our transparency stage, that we're not talking about any of the cut and fill for the ADU or JADU. So that will, of course, be in addition to the fifteen or so trucks that we're looking at.
That is correct.
Okay, so it is, it's a substantial project as far as in- impact on the community and the and the and the traffic, which we can talk about. But I just want to be clear that we're just not talking about fifteen trucks. It's going to be more. But the portion we can talk about, it's going to be about fifteen trucks.
I agree with what you're saying.
Okay, all right, great, perfect. Then I'm back to John. Sorry, I have a couple more questions that I'm just a little confused on. So on that living guardrail, that's what we're calling it, right? So where where, I'm sorry, where are the plants? Are they weighed down in the ground down below the retaining wall? They have to climb up all the the retaining wall and then?
Any wall varies in height. So it's somewhere in the neighborhood of three feet to six feet. I would expect the vine to be able to overcome that really quickly. In fact, we just planted at two seventy Beach Road, we planted vines that were seven feet tall right off the bat. I mean, we can get some larger ones. We have, we have the ability to plant in the biotreatment.
Okay.
And so four, yeah, four feet. So I would expect it to be up in that railing very quickly. And then where the where the kind of expanded lawn spaces, that varies in height too, because the ground slopes off. But again, I I would expect that to be able to be the vines to grow well, well, it's protected, gets decent sun. So I would expect it to grow pretty, pretty quickly, rapidly.
So, and I don't know if this question is for you specifically, or if it's for Sean. But when I visited the site, you made mention that the front portion of the landscaping is going to have a major redo after all the construction, but there's no detail on that. So between the fence and the current patio at the front door, that area where the construction perhaps a ramp may go. Did I misunderstand you that there's going to be a future landscape plan in that area?
I think it was a misunderstanding.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know what that is referring to. So apologies if we misunderstood.
Okay, all right, great, perfect. So that answers my question. Thank you very much. I'll open it to the public. And is there anyone in the public that wishes to speak? Please try to limit your comments to three minutes.
I will, and my wife Kathleen Wicklund will.
Okay, perfect.
First, I have to find this. Do I X out of this page? Sammy, I don't want to do it and mess something up. I'm on the desktop.
So we have a commissioner that is also an IT person, so we're very fortunate. You always have that one of those, yeah.
And then I wanted to hit that again. He said, put me up here on the corner. There it is. Good evening. My name is Roy Wicklund and my wife Kathleen and I live at fifteen Belvedere Avenue, directly below the project. From the very beginning, we've supported this project as long as the applicants provide a design that maintains some of the privacy we now have on Belvedere Avenue. For not only ourselves, but our neighbors and those people that use Belvedere Avenue every day. I think the the new set of plans does a very poor job in their rendering, showing what's going on. And the story polls were also inadequate. There's some existing story polls there for older versions that are no longer part of the project. So what I tried to do is take a look at their elevation. As you can see on the screen here, it's hard by looking at the plans to determine what's really going on if you strip away all the new proposed landscape. But there's two concrete structures to simplify this that are being built. One is a lower wall. And this is at the grade of the lawn. And it also includes the bio.
Retention.
Retention area, thank you. And that's approximately four feet below the upper deck, which was where the dining, pool and patio areas are. And our concern is that landscaping isn't adequate enough alone to provide the privacy we need for both sound and visual. There needs to be a physical barrier to minimize the impacts of people. And those are my drawings. I'm not very good at that, but trying to demonstrate that Belvedere Avenue, the blue line, is directly below. And we're going to have activity along that property line when they use their backyard. So we would like to see a solid privacy fence. And that runs the length of the property. So when there are people on the lower level, they are screened somewhat. And I, our preference would be forty-eight inches, four-foot fence. The current guardrails are forty-two. That can possibly work also. The applicant has said that they plan to let the potocarpus grow up to the top of the guardrail. But if they are willing to do that, then they shouldn't oppose a solid fence because they're not going to see through the potocarpus anyway. So a solid fence should not interfere with their activity if the potocarpus is going to be there. If the potocarpus, I mean, the solid fence isn't there, our concern, there's no incentive to let the potocarpus grow. And why not prune it down at the level that gives them clear view, which is what they're asking for today, no obstruction. So we believe a four-foot fence or forty-two inch fence head at the minimum would be something that would be beneficial to the people using Belvedere Avenue, the neighbors, and also assure us that that potocarpus will not be trimmed. If you look at the angle here, they have, this is their cross section, standing down on Belvedere Avenue. Is that six minutes already?
Is that six minutes? No, his wife gave him three. Kathy.
Thank you.
Three more.
Thank you. You can see a person standing on the edge of the lawn. It's not that far. It's only about twenty feet horizontal to the edge of Belvedere Avenue. So without any fencing, we're dependent a hundred percent on landscape. There are always, you know, landscape, greenery, some to dine, pruning, disease, and during the period of time it takes to get there. For example, that fence they referenced, they do have, that vine will have to first grow up a concrete wall four feet before it even starts to grow up along the fence. So that's going to take a number of years, in our opinion. So we would like to see this solid fence. I did look at the fence. I think they're proposing out of metal, and I'm not sure if that's what they are. There's a fence like that on Eucalyptus Avenue. And it's just slotted metal fencing. You can still see through it. That would not be our preference. But if they put that along the entire length and turned it forty-five degrees, so like Venetian blinds, so you wouldn't see straight out, but you could see at an angle, that might be something we'd be, we'd be willing to consider. Looking at the planned view, where we're talking, the location of fences, where this red line is along the lawn area on the left over here, along the dining and patio area, along the pool and along the the deck patio deck over here, that kind of fencing would really help mitigate the sound and the noise and the visual impacts on Belvedere Avenue. See if I missed anything here. We have been considering this project for a year and a half now. I think I looked today. I have a hundred and seven emails just alone. And hours and hours and hours of time. I really don't want to spend any more time on it. I'd like to see their, get their home built and constructed. I'd like you, I'd recommend the commission approve it tonight, but prove it with the condition that a fence be built along the entire backside of the property, providing screening as I've outlined here. I'll take any questions. I'll take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, everyone. My name's Tony Donahue at nineteen Belvedere. My wife cedes her time to me. First, I'd just like to say, nice to see everyone again. It's good to set a positive tone. It's great to live in Belvedere. I'll just put that out there into the universe, okay? So let me start by saying, we are in agreement with the Wicklands' request for an additional fence privacy screen. I know the casters may not want that, but I think maybe if we can make a final push, we get something done there. It's, it's, some of it's in there in the middle. You know, I think Roy's arguments, we just, we're in agreement. I think they make sense. We'd like to get an agreement and get this thing done for, for everyone's sake. We do appreciate the new landscaping plan, and it was a very constructive dialogue with John. And it's a great example of what can be done when people talk together, and maybe that would save the hundred and seventy emails. And it's a lot of time. That being said, after we reviewed the staff report and revised plans, we did find some discrepancies and some action items requested by the commissioners that were not included in the latest package. And some of this is, you've already covered. For example, page A zero dot one shows the proposed screening would almost reach the top level of the deck. We don't think that's entirely accurate. Page A three dot zero illustrates the new screening would stop at the pool level line. So it's, it's a good example of, it's not totally clear all the time what's getting done, and that's not in anyone's interest. There, there are other discrepancies we've already discussed with the commissioners, and we don't want to waste everyone's time with that tonight. And we appreciate the acacias and, and, excuse me, or staying, but like the commission requested, we'd like to see a count of the acacias and the oaks in case anything happens during construction. And the count of the trees that were illegally removed by the previous owner, again, requested by the commission. We'd love to see a conditional approval based on maintaining the acacias at their current height and pruning practices that are just conform to generally accepted professional standards as previously discussed. Regarding the TOZI survey, that, that's covered already, I think, in some part. The survey shows a thirty-foot pine, two twenty-four-foot pines, another fifteen-foot tree in the proposed lawn portion of the project. These trees are most likely removed illegally and not obviously by the current neighbors. When the other unpermitted great activities took place, the city's municipal code states, the general guidance, it's two new trees for every one that's been removed. That's at least eight. Again, I'm not an expert. I'm not saying I have all the facts on that. But as an example, the previous owners of our home removed a large oak tree that was unhealthy, all done with permits, and had to replace with three cork oaks. I think it's important that there's consistent decisions that are getting made across the neighborhood. I think that creates a liability issue. And we'd also like to understand if the lone portion of this project would still be approved if those four large trees were there today. I think that's a pretty important thing to get clarification on. In general, we think an accurate set of plans and documentation that probably is distributed earlier is in everyone's interest. Going forward, there is still room for confusion. And so again, I, I mean this sincerely, in everyone's interest, including the casters. If everything is very accurate in the plans, where there's no discrepancies, there is less room for confusion for all parties. And we'd all like to spend less time on that, I think. I guess, last point, it was very helpful to have the full 3D renderings last year of the actual house as well. Again, I think in our, in the neighbor's interest, so that we just see exactly what's getting built with no, if we can minimize that room for ambiguity, that's where a lot of the tension might be coming from. And that, I think we can do a lot to remove that. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Deborah, is John giving you his three minutes?
John is giving me his three minutes.
Okay.
I'm Deborah Wilton at Two Eucalyptus. I have so many responses to so many things that have been said tonight. It's really going to be hard to limit it to six minutes. I find it difficult to comprehend that the presenters have all this unlimited time, and we as neighbors have only six minutes. Just like to make that public. I'd like to start by thanking Sammy for a more thorough staff report that included input from the neighbors. It's much appreciated. And I'd like to thank the two commissioners who visited us at Two Eucalyptus again to listen further to our concerns. Lastly, I'd like to thank Sean, the architect, for addressing our privacy issue seriously by adding a six-foot fence and making the landscaping plan at the southwest corner of our lot much more robust. Thank you very much. This is appreciated. Unfortunately, we still have serious doubts about the feasibility of retaining the landscaping between our two properties. If, as stated by the builder, Mark, all of the off-haul and infill of the construction of the retaining walls, new lawn, pool, et cetera, will occur by using the ten-foot setback between the shared fence that runs along our joint property line. The current plans call for keeping the existing pitasporum by protecting them with wire mesh and adding four more. This area is currently fully landscaped, creating a beautiful green zone and privacy screen between our properties with a twenty-year-old palm and other plantings that are not noted on the plans. We wonder, perhaps for good reason, as they may disappear. The reality is that this corridor is barely wide enough for the existing railroad tie staircase that exists. It's not wide enough for the bulldozers needed to excavate below and to remove the soil from the site or bring in what is needed for the proposed new structures. The inevitable result will be that the existing mature landscaping will be destroyed. We would note that this landscaping was done at the explicit request and direction of the planning commission fourteen years ago in the context of an earlier major renovation project at one oh five Golden Gate. So far, our landscaping focus has been on our privacy issues in the southwest corner of our lot. But we would like to ask the commissioners to require the applicant to submit a full landscaping plan for the entire south side of the project along our property line. It takes fully into account, in a feasible way, how construction will actually be implemented and what impact it will have on the existing greenscape. Then there's an issue at the front of the house facing Golden Gate, which Commissioner Cara Piat has addressed, the plant has asked questions about. The plans show that the existing landscaping will remain, and four trees will be added, but the type of the tree is not specified. Commissioner Hart has also asked about that area. Once again, given what the builder has said about everything going out and coming in through the top of Golden Gate, one wonders how the commitments on landscaping at the front are consistent with the construction plan. Along the same line, since the builder says he plans to access the property for all off-haul and infill, concrete pour, et cetera, from Golden Gate, we wish to clearly point out that this seems unviable, underlined, unviable. We would note that there's only a thirty-two-foot opening between the two red-marked fire curbs to do this. This means dump trucks, cement trucks, material deliveries will be parked on the steep incline, the steepest incline of Golden Gate for eighteen months to two years, creating a significant danger to anyone entering or exiting Eucalyptus Road and those driving up or down Golden Gate. In addition, where will the other subcontractors park that will be there every day? Because both Golden Gate and Eucalyptus have steep inclines where they merge, it's impossible for drivers to see oncoming traffic from either direction, even when there are no vehicles parked at the apex of the two roads. If construction-related parking is allowed, it will cause serious traffic problems and the real risk of a head-on collision. The only way this can be prevented is by painting both sides of the curb at the top of Eucalyptus Red, down to the mailbox at our house, Two Eucalyptus. We realize that these types of issues are supposed to be dealt with the process, in the process of issuing the building and construction permits. But we want to make the commissioners aware of the impracticality of the proposed plan and that the residents of Eucalyptus will be presenting a petition to the city. Moving on, I want to restate for the record, the process that we have all been put through has serious flaws. Since the last meeting, we were not contacted by the applicant or the architect, nor were we presented with any revised drawings. The drawings were only available online last Thursday, leaving us and the other neighbors scrambling to understand a complex set of documents last minute. The drawings are a way of verifying compliance, as conversations can be unclear or contradictory. Even this meeting can be, can be contradictory. Throughout this process, the plans have been changed, submitted to the city at the last moment. Not even tonight, there were new presentations, not shared with neighbors and contained inconsistencies and discrepancies in details. While the project has improved enormously, enormously from two thousand twenty-two, it still has unresolved issues. We think it would be desirable to get it right before starting. Hence, we agree with our neighbors and feel strongly that the commissioners should issue a continuance tonight. Lastly, I'd like to say that I think it's a real flaw in the approval process for the planning commission not to require preliminary detailed feasible construction management plans for large and complex projects like this one to be presented in the context of design review. This is because the construction process significantly impacts the neighbors and the neighborhood, particularly when construction occurs over a long period of time. We have all seen large projects in our community have negative impacts and run way over estimated time. Then everybody, the applicant, the city officials, the neighbors are put in an impossible situation that financial penalties really don't address. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? Nancy, is there anyone on Zoom? Yeah, that's okay. No, okay. Alright. I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Lasky, would you like to lead off?
My pleasure.
I'm sorry, you're right. I jumped ahead. Save your comments, Marsha. Okay, we'll give five minutes for rebuttal.
Okay, this will be quick. It's more of a clarification. I know we can't open it to the public again, but when we met with Roy last Friday, it was understanding he was asking for a fence at the lower retaining wall, and it is different from what's here. So I'm not, I'm just wondering what, what's being asked for now, because I think that's.
I need to reopen the public meeting because you're speaking. So I'll do that officially. And then I guess, Rory, could you try to explain to Sean what you're asking for?
We asked for a fence on the lower retaining wall, and we're hopeful they'd come back with that, but they didn't. So when we, they didn't respond and didn't show any interest in doing that, we looked at it and said, well, ideally, we'd like to have the fence where the guardrail is. And that's even better than, you know, four or five feet below. So we changed our mind. I guess we can do that like you've changed your mind, so. But I think where the guardrail is, is there's already fencing there. It seems simpler and easier just to make that a solid fence rather than a guardrail. So that's why we came to that.
I, I just, just getting back to the tree removal, the previous tree removal, just for the record, they're, in the town code, they're considered undesirable species. In fact, we probably wouldn't have even had to get permits to remove them, just.
You have to get a permit to remove any tree, whether they're undesirable or not.
It, it does, it does describe Monterey pines and the acacias and others as being considered undesirable in the town code. Just, just, just for the record.
Yeah, I wouldn't go down the tree ordinance right now. We're going to get that cleaned up.
I'll be quick. I, I just wanted, you know, I've been building in Belvedere since the early two thousands. I used to live in Belvedere and moved here in two thousand and one, lived here for about nine years. And I really, really take seriously concerns about construction staging plans and safety. I mean, you know, we're always one step away in my business of something that we won't want to be. So, you know, we're really heavily safety-conscious. And the Belvedere Building Department, the building official, Gennaro, the building inspector, the Public Works Department, they're just as serious about this. And so I just want to assure the neighbors that, you know, we don't run a roughshod operation. I'm sure that, that, that the staff would attest to that. I, I am hopeful they would. And, you know, we work with the police, we work with the Public Works, and we, you know, it's, it's in everyone's best interest to have a safe operation. So as far as parking and staging and all of the different variables, this is something that we take seriously. And I just, I just want the neighbors to know that I hear what they're saying, and, and that, that is something that's on my mind as well. It's not sort of, you know, we're not off to the races to hurry up as quickly as we can and be reckless. We want to be safe at the end of the day and have a happy neighborhood and happy clients. Thank you.
You have a question?
Oh, nice, real quick. Okay, what, what are the possibilities of taking out the fill on the side of where the garage is, as opposed to the other side?
It's totally a doable operation. It might take a little longer. It's just a different kind of process. You know, we're, we're not bringing bulldozers in. The, the nice thing about working in Belvedere and other cliffside areas is it gives us an excuse to buy these really small machines that, you know, are very unique. So, you know, they're thirty-six inches wide. People can ride it behind them and stand on them. I mean, we do have things that are much larger as well, but that's why we go down, up and down sort of a narrow staircase. You know, we build it up and we're creative and innovative that way. But we can, we can bring material up on the driveway side, too. You know, we, we stage excavators and we kind of reach down and, and we just stage up like you'd see in sort of a cartoon. And we're happy to do it. It, it, it's innovative and, and we can get it done, and we've done it before. So we're just trying to find the best way to do it in the spirit of efficiency.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, so, oh, Marsha.
Well, actually, yes, I have a question to the applicant before.
Okay.
My question to, I guess, to Sean and to Mark and to John, is there a willingness for you to, to put a fence in on the wall?
I think I'll try to answer that. At the end of the day, it's an owner decision, but I think a fence at the lower retaining wall versus right at the patio, it, it, it's still, to me, gives privacy, but it allows the casters to have a little bit more view. So if the commission was going to consider that, I would just ask that it, you consider the implications of it being, you know, adjacent to the patio and pool. I think the lower retaining wall could achieve privacy in the same way, and also, like I said, afford, afford the casters a little bit more view.
But that's in conflict with what John said, that the porticarpus, we're going to grow nine feet and go up to where the current railing is. So if they do, my understanding is the fence on.
I'm trying to think how to answer that. I, I mean, it seems, it's still, I guess, if the screening doesn't come in full, the screen, the, the fence right behind it, I think still serves a purpose. So I'm not, I'm not sure how to answer that, but I, I don't feel like it's in conflict with those two things personally.
So just, so I have it in my brain. So if the fence went on the lower retaining wall, it was only going to raise about a foot above the patio area.
That's correct.
So, but the porticarpus is supposed to go all the way up to where the railing is now. So it, it's in conflict with what the architect or the landscape person is saying. it's in conflict with what the architect or the landscape person is saying, how tall the potocarpus are going to grow versus a railing, because the railing would be at the same height as the railing now approximately, I would say.
I'm honestly not sure how to answer it. I think, I think if you think about it from our applicant's side, it, it affords the privacy. And again, if the, if the worry is the landscape screening is insufficient, which is what we've heard a lot, this fence behind it creates another barrier. The people down at Belvedere Avenue are quite a bit lower in elevation, so you're looking up, so the fence would still provide. And, and I will note, unfortunately, we didn't get there, but Roy was willing to accept this Friday when we met. And that was what his sketch had suggested. So. Yeah. I don't disagree with that, but I think, again, asking for it. Yeah. It's redundant. Okay.
Okay.
I would say the average is right around four feet, but it it'd have a railing if you're dropping more than 30 inches.
No, 42 inches is the railing requirement, isn't it, in California? One from 36 to 42.
42 inches, but you need to have a railing if the drop is more than 30 inches. We do have a railing everywhere we need to. I think this is a question of, is it solid and how high it is? But we do have a railing that meets code everywhere.
Anyone else? Last call. Okay, close the public hearing once again. Bring it back for discussion. Marsha, you can continue.
Okay. I do, and I, I'm sure you know this, but it does make it very difficult when we receive revised documents two hours before a meeting. So I'm sure you all know that, but before we receive them, I was actually wondering how I could vote on plans that had so many inconsistencies because I didn't know what I was voting on. I think it makes it difficult for everyone. So it's just something I want to slap your hand about it, so you don't do it again. In my opinion, I, I usually think screening with landscaping provides actually more soundproofing and, than a fence. I have found that it, landscaping really is terrific at lessening noise and also visual impact. So I, I mean, I just wanted to ask the question, but I really don't think a fence is necessary. I think that you'll find when you have very thick landscaping like they're talking about, that that really solves the problem. I think this, this project has really evolved from the last time and also from last year. You've eliminated the variances from the original plan. The infinity pool has been revised in response to the neighbors. And I think the privacy issues have really been addressed by the extensive new landscaping plan with the, I think they're 38, 36 inch box oak trees. And I had also thought, I think the, the eastern side adjacent to Eucalyptus had also really been answered also. Giving them a lot of privacy. So in my opinion, the project has been really improved and refined. It does need a condition that all the existing trees and new trees will be noted. So if something happens or something, if they get cut down, they can be replaced. And I think, I, I don't know if this is accurate, but I remember reading there were 11 acacias and six oak, but we just need to determine that, and that needs to be a condition of approval in, in this plan. So I actually, at this point, can make a finding for design review with the tree condition and also the revocable license.
Thank you. Commissioner Hart?
Nana, I need to turn our mic on, please.
I guess I will start with quoting one of our longest sitting planning commission chairs and architect. And he said up here on the dais once that landscaping is not to be used to cover, mask, or correct inherent bad design. This was not a bad design. It was an illegal attempt to speed the sale of this property. But now that illegal flattened area is being used to add a very large entertainment center, so to say, with pool and dining area and lawns and, and planters over an entire area that should never have been touched. It should have been the steep slope down to the street that it originally was. I have the hardest time seeing how an applicant, knowing that this all was illegal, somehow can expect to have the commission agree on making, totally reshaping the land on this lot to accommodate this whole flat area. So I am going to differ from my, my commission friend, Commissioner Lasky, and say that I cannot make the findings to pass this proposal.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Slemaker?
First of all, I want to mention how we've all spent countless hours on this proposal and there's been a lot of progress and I appreciate everybody's back and forth on this. I agree with my fellow commissioner, Marshall Lasky, on quite a few of the items. I do find it difficult, even though my questions that I had before today, a lot have been answered, to, to be able to make a decision when you don't get the final plans until an hour and a half before, which is when I got mine, the meeting. So as much as I feel more confident about everything that's going forward, whether it's the landscaping, I find at this time that I cannot make a decision and would propose that we have an extension.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Burke?
If I could just say something, sorry, Commissioner Burke.
Sure.
That might help in your discussion of the item. We do have a condition of approval in the design review resolution that states the final landscaping plan be reviewed and approved by the planning commission chair and the director of planning and building. I've heard a lot of discussion tonight about the landscaping. I think it's clear what the commissioners want, so I just wanted to put that out there and remind you that this is a typical condition that we have in design review resolutions and it is included in the resolution before you tonight.
Was there something else other than the landscaping that you were hesitant about, Commissioner Slemaker?
I still have a question about how the fill is going to go. I know that's a part of building, but I'd like to know more of that. I also now wonder about the driveway, the garage. That's important that, for, for the owners as much as anyone else. So no, it's not just landscaping for me.
Okay, just want to make that clarification. Okay, back to Mr. Commissioner Burke, Mr. Burke.
Mr. Commissioner. Thank you. Overall, I know this has been a really, really challenging and frustrating process for all involved and I'm very empathetic to this. And I know there's a lot of lessons for all of us to learn, all of us to learn from this process and to be applied going forward. And so I have certainly taken that on board and I'll do my part to ensure that, at least from our standpoint, we do apply it in the future. I also appreciate that the applicant and the neighbors have worked really hard to try and find resolution. It's not been a great process. I think, you know, feelings have been hurt on both sides. People have misunderstood each other. Maybe the communications, not maybe, but the communications haven't been ideal. But again, I think people were really trying to address the issues that were raised. And so I do want to acknowledge that and all of the time and energy everyone invested to try and get to a place where we had a path forward. I personally do think that as a result of that work, today we are at a place where there is a way forward on this particular plan. When we left our last meeting, I think we said there were two main issues that we were trying to resolve, hill stability and privacy. I mean, there were also some plan information requests in terms of the grade and so forth, but that was my recollection. That's consistent with what was in the staff report, is those two big categories were things that were outstanding and we had asked people on both sides to try and resolve. I think in terms of hill stability, I feel comfortable based on the boring reports that the hill is, is a, is bedrock essentially. I mean, not going down very far, there's bedrock there. And so it's not an unstable hill. It's actually, it appears to be a very stable hill. And one could argue after the work that's going to be done, the, the hill could be even more stable. And so I think that one category for me anyways was resolved or I feel comfort or confident that that's no longer an issue in terms of blocking this to move forward. I think the second issue, which was also very important, was privacy for the downward hill neighbors. And I do feel that progress has been made on that front. Specifically, I think the addition of the landscaping plan and the detail really helped us understand what people were striving for. What was the baseline that the applicant was saying they were going to create or move towards in terms of a goal for privacy? And I think that was lacking before and now I have a better understanding of what your intent is in terms of vegetation and planting. I think those detailed renderings went a long way to actually give me comfort that we're on the same page in terms of what you're going to be screening and what privacy you'll be extending to the downward neighbors. However, I do think that, you know, if we do move forward with design review, we should condition it on maintaining that baseline. So that's not day one, because as you said, it could take some time for these plants to grow in. But I think the renderings and the documents that you've submitted, things like A4 dot three and A4 dot four, will go a long way for everyone to have in the public record what you're committing to in terms of how this landscaping will be maintained going forward. So if a tree dies or if it gets over trimmed and it creates an issue or it's inconsistent with what we all agreed is the baseline, then there's a way to ensure that it gets back to that baseline, because all of that information will be memorialized and conditioned on this approval. I do think the green screen guardrail does help from a dining area standpoint, and I do think that provides about four feet of screening along the upper retaining wall, which was what Roy and Sean were just discussing, the difference between those two. However, and Tim, you're not going to like this one, I am concerned about, you know, the time it will take for things to grow in. And I don't think redundancy is necessarily a bad thing, especially when you're talking about planning and developing and building as we are. And so I would actually propose that we do go with it. I think it was Roy, it was your January, September 7th recommendation, which was a five-foot privacy fence along the lower retaining wall, not the upper, the lower retaining wall. And the only modification, I would say, maybe there, started at the southwest corner of the pool and go to the southeast corner. Because there's now a screening at the dining area, and so it seems like you would really only need to fence, you know, where the pool is, maybe even the sitting area to the right of the pool, if you're looking up here. So I could make the findings for design review with those conditions, because I feel that that would address the two things that we all agreed were the two main categories that were unresolved in our last meeting.
Thank you. Commissioners, I don't.
So I think in concept, it's a good project. There's a problem there with non-engineered fill properly designed and executed. I think it'll be a nice property and it will solve, you know, concerns about the stability of the, of the slope. I actually understand from several of the neighbors, including Mr. Wicklund's presentation tonight, the desire for a 42 to 48 inch solid rail at the upper level. I think the applicant could provide it without too much impact on their design. You know, they have an open rail now. It's nice to look at the shrubbery on the other side of the rail, but really all you'd be giving up is just, you know, view of the potocarpus or the acacia trees. Because the way, when you stand at that level, you basically look over the acacia trees now and you get the view of the bay. So even when I was standing there, I had the same thought as, you know, if, if the rail were solid, it, it would provide an additional layer of privacy. And I, I agree that the shrubs are good for acoustics and, and privacy, but, you know, they also take time to grow up. So I would say that I would like to certainly support a condition for a fence. I think we have several views of how the fence might go here. To me, it's, it's easy to make the neighbors happy if possible, but, you know, I'm going to listen to the rest of the commission. I raised this issue about the driveway. I think it's real. In a way, I I don't want to make that the thing in my mind that would hold up the project. So I'd be willing to add a condition that the architect work with staff to verify that it's a workable condition. I can imagine there are ways to work it out, but I think it's really underdeveloped the way it is in the plans right now. But again, I think if I could get a condition that the applicant would work with staff to verify that things are working well, I could make the finding for design review.
And the revocable license?
And the revocable license. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so I wanted to first address just a couple of things that were brought up by the neighbors. And regarding the 3D rendition, we had requested it at our last meeting and, and we discussed it in the meeting I had with Commissioner Johnson with the applicant. And Sean was under the impression is that the 3D rendering that he was going to give was going to show how the plants would reflect against the building versus view from up in the sky, looking down and showing it without any vegetation. So that, that was a confusion. That's why we didn't get the 3D plans that actually had been on the very first plan. And then I want to address the concept of tree damage or shrubbery damage during construction. Those things do happen. And when those things happen, they have to come back and revise their final landscape plan and have it approved. And we take it very seriously when things get damaged, that things have to go back in on an equal basis. It may be a different plant than what was there before, but it has to serve the same purpose of the plant that was there. So just so that everyone does understand that if there is some tree damage or shrubbery damage during the construction, that, that will be addressed with a further revised landscape plan. I see landscape plans as a living document because things change and sometimes you have to be flexible. And so it is something that both the staff and the building staff does take very seriously. Vegetation that's damaged during vegetation that's damaged during construction. So that would be addressed on a separate issue. And to address the issue of the red paint on the curb, I don't believe it's our, we have the power to say the curb has to be painted. I think that's a DPW consideration, and maybe even a city council reservation, resolution. But I think that it is something that should be brought up to our head of DPW, to have him take a look at that and see if that is something that should be done, taking into concern multiple residents who have talked about that apex of eucalyptus in Golden Gate. So as I said, I did have a private meeting with the applicant and also the entire team, along with Commissioner Johnson, and I also met with them on Monday to review the plans and have several questions. Appreciate that you made the color gray on the house a little darker, so it doesn't quite read as white, and all the other changes that you made. And I think that Studio Green did a fantastic job in addressing the privacy concerns and dealing with the neighbors. And I think I agree with almost everything that was been said here by my fellow commissioners. And so we're at an apex, and after listening to both of the commissioners on the side of me, I think that there is a way going forward to condition this project so that we can move it forward. And what I have taken note on what I believe the conditions are is a count of the existing trees, a baseline height of what the landscaping should be. So and then I think that Commissioner Seidel's study, suggestion to have the city verify the driveway situation with building and with maybe some further study from the applicant is something that can be worked out. And I believe that we're going to have a fence. And so, but we're not, we don't have a consensus on what that fence should be going forward. So we have a five-foot fence on the lower retaining wall, and then we have a suggestion that there should be a fence up top. I personally feel that the fence should be up top. I know that we're saying solid, but I don't know if you've ever seen the fence at 16 eucalyptus. It's a unique kind of fence, and I think it might be something that if you actually took a look at, that it would be something that looks solid, but you actually can see through it. So, you know, that would be something that, you know, you can look at and maybe determine with your building plans which kind of fence or railing. I think it should be a railing. I don't think it should be a four-foot fence. I think it should be a 42-inch railing, and it should go across, well, if you're going to do it, you're going to have to do it in front of where the dining area is, because otherwise it looks silly if it's not all the same. So that's my thought, that I think that fully addresses the neighbors' desires. And also additionally, with the height of the potocarpus being maintained at nine feet, or whatever the, and I would want it verified, whatever the height of the existing railing is now, to that height, that it would always have to be maintained. So I want to open it back up and see if anyone feels with the.
Can I just, can I sort of summarize some of those conditions to make sure that I'm understanding it correctly? And I think a lot, two of them are sort of tied to the final landscape plan, or three of the components are tied to the final landscape plan. One is, on that final landscape plan, the existing trees need to be numbered, as well as trees that were removed previously, shown, removed, and replacement trees for those tree removals. Secondly, also on that landscape plan, some type of railing on the, at the top level retaining wall between 42 and 48 inches. I think also included in that landscaping plan, we need to have maximum heights indicated at full growth for plants. I know that Commissioner Burke mentioned having the rendering as a baseline for what the sort of concept should look like, but I think when it comes down to the details, renderings are difficult to enforce. And so if we're really trying to hone in on specifics of heights of plants, I think that we need to have the maximum height listed on the landscape plan. Does that, and then something about how the driveway, as you mentioned, the driveway and the road, and that gate and wall, and how that is actually going to function in real life.
Yeah.
Does that sound right?
So I think it should be a railing. I think it should be a 42-inch railing versus a fence, just because that's what it basically is, is a railing. I don't think they need the extra six inches. I mean, it's 42 by code, so I think that's all we should require them to do. I think the point of it is, is just that, that, yeah, it gets some privacy screening when people are actually standing, that you are going to see a person, but you may not see the whole person, you would just see part of it. I won't say it.
Thank you.
So, but yeah, so I think on the landscape plan, if you can give a measurement of what the height is for the railing, and then figure out what kind of railing you want, we can do that. So, but I don't have consensus yet. So.
For the railing and the design of it to provide privacy, does that come back, or is that just a general condition?
It's a general condition in the chair or the vice chair.
Come back to you to approve it. Okay, got it.
And with the director of planning.
Yeah, I can get behind that.
And I can get behind that, but, and also if we put in about the driveway.
Yeah, that's in there.
Thank you.
Is to verify the workability. Thank you for that suggestion. Nana? Okay. All right. So may I have a motion, please?
I'm going to need help, Rebecca. I move to adopt the resolution granting design review for a residential addition and associated site improvements in 105 Golden Gate Avenue with the conditions of the landscaping trees being counted, the plants noted as a maximum height, the 42-inch railing on the iron wall, correct? Yeah, privacy railing, and also the driveway to be conditioned as.
Verify the workability.
I second.
Exactly as Rebecca stated, so, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All against?
Nay.
All right.
So it, I moved to recommend to the city council approval of a revocable license for private improvements on city land adjacent to Belvedere Avenue for the property located at 105 Golden Gate Avenue.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All against?
Aye.
Okay, so you have it five to one. Congratulations. And Sean, really, Sean, you really should look at 16 eucalyptus. It's a unique fence that they might really like.
It's beautiful.
Okay, 43. Guys, guys, ladies, 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 we have another, we have more agendas. You can go outside. Thank you. So our next agenda item, 43 Peninsula, was pulled. Can I have a motion to extend it to a future date?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Burke is recused from item number five. You have to state why.
I live within 500 feet of the applicant's property.
Thank you. So can we have a staff report for 236?
Thank you, Chair Keripiet, and members of the planning commission, for your consideration this evening. This is an application for design review, an exception to total floor area for a residential addition and site improvements at 236 Bella Vista Avenue. The subject property is centrally located on a steeply-sloped 12,000-square-foot parcel in the R15 zoning district. The site contains a 452-square-foot detached garage, 1,100-square-foot detached accessory dwelling unit, and a three-level 3,989-square-foot primary residence. The project proposes to construct an 87-square-foot residential addition at the second level of the primary residence, replace the exterior stairs leading to the home, and reorient the concrete landing and exterior steps at the rear yard. The project would also replace exterior siding, windows, and decking at the second level and first levels to match the third level of the home. The staff report resolutions and plan sets state that the project is requesting a 189 square-foot addition. After further review, 102 square feet of the requested floor area is currently covered by a roof supported by posts and has a floor, and is considered existing floor area per the Belvedere Municipal Code. Shown here, the applicant has submitted a revised drawing where the pink shaded area shows the 87-square-feet section that would be counted towards the new floor area. The scope of work would be entirely on the second and first levels of the home. At the north elevation, the project proposes four new windows at the bedroom addition, and would replace windows indoors with a new 15-foot-wide by eight-foot-tall sliding door. The project includes a new concrete step and guardrail, and would replace a fixed window with a casement window at the first level. At the east elevation, the project would replace an existing gate and window and construct a new solid wood swing door. The project would raise the ceiling of an interior staircase leading down to the first level for additional headroom as well. The project proposes off-white wood trim siding and black aluminum windows and door frames. The project would replace the second-level deck with pedestal pavers and a black metal guardrail. These exterior improvements would match the existing third level of the residence. The project proposes two fixed downlights below the third-level deck and seven in-ground steplights at the exterior walkways. And the project requests an exception to total floor area to allow 5,644 square feet, where 3,968 square feet are permitted. Staff believes the additional floor area would not significantly impact primary views. The site has unusual characteristics that minimize the impact of the greater floor area, in that the addition is set back over 50 feet from the southern property line and screened from the northern property by the northern bedroom. Our staff has received four letters in support of the project from neighbors. The project would be categorically exempt from CEQA. And as outlined in the staff report, staff believes the facts support the required design review and exception to total floor area findings. Thank you.
Thank you for that staff report. Very well done. So does anyone have questions for staff? Can we hear from the applicant, please? Oh, one question, sorry.
So Sammy, now, is it 87 square feet? Is the totals, is that what the total square?
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to confirm that.
Good evening. My name is Azalee Jami. I'm the owner and the architect for the project. Many thanks for Sammy, Nancy, and the commissioners for taking the time and visiting our house and reviewing our proposal. And nicely done presentation. I have one, but I think you covered most of it. So I start by saying that the house was built in 1921. We lived in it since 2008. We remodeled the top two floor of the house and finished it in 2020. The, we have a teenage daughter that started using the two bottom floor of the house and alarmed us that it is time to take care of remodeling that piece of the house. In order to, you know, our thought, starting designing this, was to create a coherent and harmonious structure that takes care of the disjointed additions that happened after building the house in, you know, 1921. There are pieces of the house that has not been taken care of, and additions that has happened without thoughtful consideration. That was mainly considered while solving the layout and floor plan issues and problems. With that, I would go through, should I close the ones that are already open and open my presentation, or?
No, Kevin's going.
Close this one. Perfect. As it was mentioned, we are enclosing under the existing structure, the area under the existing structure, we are enclosing that. And the enclosed area is mainly already obscured by the existing bedroom on this side of the property, and is not imposing any privacy issue for the neighbors all around, as the house is a private house sitting in the middle of the land between Bella Vista and Bayview. The colored area shows the proposed comparing to the existing, and the above is no work. It shows the all disjointed additions that I was mentioning, that is being cleaned up, basically. The same thing is shown on this elevation, where you can see the existing beams of the previous roof remain while the additional floor was built above. Those are the things we are trying to clean up and provide a more coherent building. On this side of the building, which is adjacent and closest to our neighbor, we are removing an existing window to their property, and basically covering that by siding and providing more privacy for them and us, as we have enough window on the east side and toward the view. These are some images that can show the area that we are enclosing is going to, is almost already enclosed by roof and posts on the, on this side of it, no posts, but. this side of it, no post, but already a roof. On this elevation, as it was noted, we are enlarging the height of the roof to provide more headroom for the stair going down. And these are some of the finishes that we used in the previous project and we are going to match the same including the railings, siding, entry door, lighting, pedestal pavers, sliding doors. And I just include that the floor plan in case there is a question to answer, but I understand that planning commission is not much interested about interior plan layout. So I just not going to talk about that. And as Sammy mentioned, I reviewed the drawings and plans with all of my neighbors and they were all supportive of the project.
Thank you. We noted that. Does anyone have questions for the applicant? Oh, I guess I should open the public meeting. Does anyone in the public wish to speak? See, no one. Is there anyone on Zoom? No. Do, is there any questions for the applicant architect rolled into one? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission to discuss. Commissioner Slaymaker?
Yes, I was happy to go and walk through the property with the owner. And it was great to be able to do that as the plans, it was hard to understand exactly what what we were doing. But first of all, I want to say how much I appreciate the owners engaging their neighbors in the process and being so interested in making it a really well-planned setup for everyone. That's so important for us to have as we have learned. And so I want to thank you so much for doing that. So also, I have to say that because of the location of the 87 square feet, the addition under the floor deck, it doesn't seem to be a problem to to or impact anyone. And I and I appreciated the addition because the improvement gives this hallway down there, which I think you've all seen, a whole new usable space. Replacing underneath the steps will be a great safety addition, the new steps going down to the back. I have no issues with the windows, new windows going in, and I just feel like this is a very positive addition. So I have nothing but good feelings and can make all the findings.
Perfect. Thank you. Commissioner Hart?
I think Commissioner Slaymaker said everything that needs to be said about this project. I like it that you have taken it in in stages and lived there and found out what works and what doesn't. And it seems like you have incorporated all the best aspects of an old home that that has been used for for a long time. And I'm sure by many families and for different reasons, have rooms and stairs and everything going left and right and up and down. And that it's all now being cleaned up and and made into a very well-presented and thought-out residence or half of a residence. And I can do nothing but applaud you for what you are presenting us with and can absolutely make all the findings.
Thank you. Commissioner Seidel?
I don't need to say very much, but to an architect's eye, it's easy to see. This is a nice
Mike, please.
I I'm going to repeat that. I said to an architect's eye, it's easy to see the improvement to the quality of the house. And it's very much appreciated. And I don't think I need to say much more than that. I'll be able to make the findings.
Thank you. Commissioner Lasky?
I agree with my fellow commissioners. It was difficult to understand these plans, but once we met with the owner and went to the site, it, I can certainly see it makes all the space more efficient by reconfiguring some of these spaces instead of coming down the stairs into a bathroom. It's going to be all reconfigured and makes a lot more sense. And old houses always sometimes have their space cut up in very strange ways. So you've done such a fantastic job with the rest of the house. I know this will continue to be beautiful. It fits in with the neighborhood so well. And the addition is just very minor. It'll make your house much more livable. So I can make both findings, the exception and design review.
Thank you. And without belaboring too much, I agree with all my fellow commissioners and just want to say that I think that you approached your first renovation and the second renovation in a very thoughtful way. And to have a hearing like this is what we all dream about. So without belaboring it, I also can make all the findings for this project. So do we need to wait for Nana? To vote? Okay, so we're just going to pause for a moment till a commissioner comes back. Can I have a motion for the project, please?
Okay. I move to adopt the resolution granting design review for residential addition at 236 Bella Vista Avenue.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Wait, wait. I, wait, oh, we got this. I move to adopt the resolution granting exception to total floor area to allow 5,644 square feet where 3,968 square feet are permitted at 236 Bella Vista Avenue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Double congratulations. Thank you. With that, that ends our meeting for the month of September. Thank you all.
Thank you, guys. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you and feel better.
Thank you. You too, Nana.
Yeah, thank you. I've never gone through a bag of